I'd like to call to order the committee of the whole council meeting for February 6, 2019. Please rise for an invocation by our least chaplain, followed by a pledge to the flag.
Gracious God, we invoke your spirit in this place for direction, guidance, and for your love. We ask now that you will govern over these, your children, as we address the agenda that you've placed in our heart for the welfare of this community. So we submit ourselves unto you for guidance and direction. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, under subcommittees, Infrastructure, Vice President Pop.
There was no meeting.
Meeting? Economic Development, Ms. Lee Clark.
Evening, councilors, Madam Mayor. So I wanted to start out a positive thing. It all depends on what side of the street you're looking on. So last week, I had a call from a perturbed realtor who was complaining about the fact that there was nothing left for sale in the downtown of Pottstown. So I apologized that he was perturbed, but also said that that's a good problem for us to have. So investment is happening every day here. It's a really great day. We had the three county commissioners here to tour Pottstown. They saw three thriving businesses, as well as visited Splitting Edge and the pub. And we had the Commerce Department, all very favorable. And one of the commissioners even had his "I pick Pottstown" button. So, which I'm running out, we're getting more, so they really are things that people are wearing around town. From an economic development standpoint, I can tell you that the numbers are in, and this isn't specific to downtown, but in the last quarter, seven properties came off lease, off-market because they are leased properties, and eight came off-market and sold between four, a price between $70,000 and $220,000. Now, this is commercial properties only. Splitting Edge opens this weekend. I hope you will come out and support them. It's a really fun event. Somebody likened it to bowling for millennials. That is on Saturday. It's a ribbon cutting, and the ribbon cutting, the official ribbon cutting is 12:30, but there will be events throughout the afternoon. The vodka bar opened in the farmer's market. And I also wanted to give you an update on the Pottstown Integrated Fitness Center, formerly known as the Y. Mr. Gallotti shared with us that YMCA, that particular location in all of the Freedom Valley locations, they have met the top, they have been within the top three of their metrics. So Pottstown, for membership, new members, it was number one. And it was also number one in member satisfaction. They continue to increase usage, and they will continue to increase usage of that gym. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Transportation, Vice President Pop.
No meeting.
Meeting? The ad hoc zoning, Councilor Prosser.
Yeah, we finished up our zoning for outdoor downing and also for uses in the downtown, which is prepared for this evening.
Okay. The ad hoc financial sustainability, anything, Councilor Kirkland?
Yeah, I was thinking what you did at night, so I'll roll out.
Okay.
Yeah, I can update everyone on that. So we did hold a meeting on the 28th with the consultants who are performing the EIP or management study for the borough. We talked about the public survey, which will be made available next week, so we hope that you all will take a look at that and participate in it. And hopefully Evan can help us get out the word on the survey as well. There will also be a survey that's targeted more towards the employees of the borough as well, because we realized throughout the process, there were a lot of employees that we should be folding into this conversation, as their thoughts on our processes are very valuable. We're targeting a public meeting near the end of February. I should have a confirmation on that before the end of the week. And then the final plan presentation is tentatively scheduled for the April 8th Committee of the Hall.
Very good. Thank you. I'd like to pause now before we go into boards and committee reports. There were a number of citizens who walked in just now, and if you have come to make comment tonight, would you kindly come up and sign in on the yellow sheet of paper? Okay, I assume no one is here from emergency services, so Human Relations, Ms. Levin Good.
Good evening, councilors. At the January Commissioners' meeting, the Commissioners discussed the various smart new activities that were scheduled in the community. President Gerald Ford recognized February as Black History Month back in 1976. That time, he urged Americans to seize the opportunity to honor the two often neglected accomplishments of Black Americans in every area of endeavor throughout our history. February also has Valentine's and President's Day. The next Commission's meeting will be held on Tuesday, February 12, at 6 o'clock PM in council chambers, and all are welcome to attend. Thank you.
Thank you. Land Bank Report, Ms. Penron.
Agenda items 16 and 17 on tonight's agenda are two items for your approval. I'll not comment on those unless there's any question later on. Those would be the policies and procedures, as well as the intergovernmental cooperation agreement with the school district and the county regarding, basically regarding tax forgiveness. With regard to public comments that were received on the policies that you'll be hopefully approving tonight, the comments were excellent. We believe a conflict of interest policy should take care of most of that, as well as our stated intention to be ready to change policies as circumstances needed. And we also wanted to point out that some of the issues that have been presented with similar programs in the past, the major problems were with Philadelphia and with their civil asset seizure programs, which were kind of creating some problems, but we don't think that those are directly relevant to our particular situation. We're planning on having a lot of transparency and publicity. You will be so tired of hearing from me soon on this subject. And we're also pleased to have had about four members of the public at our last meeting. We encourage more to come. Next meeting is the 4th Monday, February 25.
Okay. While you're up, anything to say about the library?
Tax forms are available at the library. Bulk distribution by the IRS in Pennsylvania was significantly curtailed, but we're on the ball. We've got them. There are still, there's a chunk of our, lies on the paper forms, and so we're there to serve. On the other hand, we're also there to help teach people how to do their filings online, so come get your tax forms. The library is one of the three beneficiaries designated by the Rotary Bowling for a Cause on April 13th, so in keeping with the idea of supporting the library, please consider coming out or sponsoring a bowling lane, so that we can receive more money. See me. Kids programming includes a local artist named Nettie Price, well, kids artists, but it's for kids and adults, February 28th, so if you've got kids or you want to do something, check it out. Fundraising, the Friends of the Library reported that they raised about $10,000 last year, primarily by sale of the used books. So please keep on donating your books, and please keep on buying used books. We also received a grant, a much appreciated grant from Pottstown Health and Wellness. I think it was for $8,500 to help fund our collection. And I have a whole lot of other things, but I'll sit down now.
Great. Thank you. All of Met Boys and Girls Club, Councilor Kirkland.
Your report.
Pottstown School District, I'll start with Councilor Lindsay.
I attended the January 17th School Board, and they had a nice little ceremony. I was wondering why it was crowded. I thought it was for me, but unfortunately, it was for the recipients, that they had award ceremony, which was nice. And they had cupcakes. I didn't eat one. I was good. But what was interesting is that Superintendent Rodriguez was thinking about opening up the Edgewood, I guess, school, and for the fifth graders, and instead of fixing up the administration building. So they're going to do a little bit more of talking with the teachers and the parents on that, so I'll keep you posted.
Very good. I do see at least one member from the school board in the audience. Anything to add?
No, she's here on the head.
Thank you.
You should have had a copy.
Thank you.
Very good.
Yeah, I was lucky, I brought my agenda with me.
Okay, on the agenda, it announces the public hearing that is scheduled for 7:30, so we have time to move on to the mayor's report. Madam Mayor.
Oh, that's me. Happy February, everyone. All right, it's been pretty busy. January, I met with Potts Grove High School students. They're all doing a C-SPAN project, and was met with a bunch of the students at the library. Hardest questions I've ever had to answer, I have to say. Those are some tough questions. What it means to be an American, diversity, all those good questions. So I hope their projects turned out great. I met with Mayor Jenner of Royersford. I brought her out to Pottstown and took her out to Juan Carlos, and we continued to discuss opportunities for Royersford and Pottstown to unite in fun activities to compete, to see who could be the better borough. So we are still discussing some more opportunities for that. We had an epic meeting, which is one of our focus groups, on a community center. I was honored to attend the Elks Lodge Charity Ball. I have to say, Lynn Pollan, she did a phenomenal job putting on this charity ball, and the fundraising that they did benefited so many of the organizations in Pottstown. Some of, PAL was one of them, Meals on Wheels, and The Cluster. So I want to say thank you to everyone's efforts for raising funds for a lot of good organizations in the borough. I had, I was the speaker at Rotary, presented on the last year of what it's like to be mayor. We had a Pottstown Community Action meeting this week, and a community leaders meeting today as well. For Pottstown Community Action, just wanted to let you know Rock the Block is coming up in April. Right now, they are seeking applications for critical home repair and some other projects during Rock the Block, which is April 13th. All of those applications should be on Habitat's Facebook page, along with Pottstown Community Action's Facebook page. They are also seeking submissions for the T-shirt design for Rock the Block. They have extended the deadline, I think it was till the end of January. I think they're extending it till mid-February now, and they're also opening up to high school students. So if you want your design on the T-shirt for Rock the Block, which is going to go out to hundreds of people, please submit that. Again, it's on the Facebook page for Habitat and Pottstown Community Action. There's, volunteers are needed to work with AmerCor, Tuesdays and Thursdays, starting February 12 through March 21, from 6:30 to 8:30 PM, to help to provide childcare while their parents are going to workshops on homeownership and finances. If you are interested, please contact Ms. Morales at KMorales@habitatmontdelco.org. And I have to say, I'm very saddened that Whites &amp; Corns is leaving Pottstown, and I just want to say, I completely understand, and I wish them much success in the future. But Whites &amp; Corns was the first store that I went to in Pottstown when we moved here, and I don't think I'll ever forget that feeling of going into that store, and that was just, the ambiance in there just made you feel homey. So I hope that we can get something, something in that storefront eventually, but I do have to say, thank you for serving Pottstown for as long as you did, and we will definitely miss you. One more thing that's coming up this month, on the 23rd Saturday, Hobart's Run is having an indoor yard sale from 8 to noon at their office on High Street. And I think that's everything.
Very good. Thank you. Sir Manager, can you do it in nine minutes?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I'd do less than that.
Your report.
We had a productive meeting with the Montgomery County Tax Claim Bureau. That meeting was convened by, through paid, and the borough and the school district were also represented in that meeting to discuss ways we can fight against the declining assessments here in the borough. It was a very productive meeting. They offered us a lot of good advice, and we're going to be holding a follow-up meeting with the Board of Assessments very soon. Also, we're working with the school district on a violence prevention grant. It's through the PA Commission on Crime and Delinquency, and one of the requirements of that grant application is that it has to be, it has to come from a municipality. So we have offered to administer that grant for the, for the school district, so that they would be eligible. And we are also looking at working in some violence prevention items for the borough, one of which would be $30,000 that could be targeted for, to funding police foot patrols on the nights and weekends. So keep your fingers crossed that we, that we get that grant. Also, just an update, I don't have all the details yet, but we've received word from PICO that they will be replacing five miles of gas mains in the borough in 2019. As of now, I don't have all the locations, but it looks like the primary spots will be a portion of High Street and most of Hannover Street. So look for that to come. We are coordinating our paving plan with the utilities in the area that are planning work for 2019, including, including PICO. We will be commencing a spring round of paving, and then also paving as part of our water sewer main replacement projects, which we're looking to put out the bid in the next couple months through, through the authority. And that concludes my report.
Very good. Okay, we have five minutes. Mr. Hilton, can you do your presentation in five minutes?
Well, if you keep it short, whatever.
Okay.
Okay, for those of you who are not familiar with the history, residents and shade trees were probably into the 19th century, and 1954, they created a shade tree ordinance that said that all the street trees in Pottstown are responsible for property. And presently, we have about 3,300 street trees. In 1954, they did a tree commission to oversee the trees. In the 1980s, a civic group just formed and raised a half a million dollars and planted a lot of trees, about 1,400 trees. That civic group included the borough manager, it included the solicitor, the borough solicitor, who hired Charles Viner back in the 90s, it included the police chief, head of the bank, local, for a second sentence alone. We planted all those trees, and then, I mean, there they were. So I took it upon myself to try and maintain the trees, which I've done for the last 35 years, to keep up an inventory of the trees and so forth. Doing, trying to do the maintenance as much as possible with limited resources. For a period of seven years, the borough provided $20,000, which is a little something, from 2001 to 2007, and then terminated those contributions, also created new shade tree ordinance, which eliminated the tree commission. In 2014, the borough had a settlement with waste management for a half a million dollars, and of that half a million dollars, the Water and Sewer Authority decided that they would recommend $100,000 would go towards tree maintenance. So Mr. Flannos was the borough manager at that time, and so the $100,000 was signed over to Trees Inc., the nonprofit that was formed in the 1980s, which we use to maintain trees. And in the last nine years, my wife and I have personally contributed $225,000 to tree maintenance. It was a lot of money, and we can't keep it up. So I had a conversation with Mr. Keller, who pointed out that there is a tree fund. When the shade tree ordinance was rewritten in 2010, it stated that there would be a tree fund. It's a short paragraph. Hereby created a Borough Pottstown Tree Fund for the purpose of receiving money paid to the borough who have required tree plantings or for compensation for damage or removal of tree, borough of trees, or funds received from issuing of licenses and the fund shall be used to support the street tree program. So I'm requesting that the $30,000 that's in the tree fund now, and any further money would be given over to Trees Inc., which has been around since 1984, and which maintains trees in the public right of way.
Okay.
So has anybody else seen?
So per those regulations, I guess, is it your interpretation that the funds that we have can only be used for street trees?
That's all we do with it. If it's not in the public right of way, we don't do it.
So trees in, they can only be used for trees in the public right of way, as per the ordinance language?
Correct. And as you know, I send you a list of everything I'm going to do ahead of time. And we also send a letter to all the property owners, saying, we're planning to do this, and if you don't like it, we have some concerns. Here's my email, here's my phone, we're going to get the call. I've been doing this for quite a few years now.
Counselors, any questions, comments? Okay, we will list this for action Monday evening. And time seems to be right. I'm going to turn this meeting over to our solicitor, Mr. Varner, who will conduct the public meeting, public hearing.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. We are convening a public hearing at this point, based upon a request of the Montgomery Lodge, number 1271, which is located at 605 Walnut Street. Montgomery Lodge, the applicant is seeking approval for an intermunicipal transfer of a club liquor license that was last located at the Gilbertsville Fire Company. The license is specifically identified as a catering club liquor license number CC1566 If this is approved by council, the license would be transferred to the applicant's property located at 605 Walnut Street. The purpose of this public hearing is to receive public comment and recommendation of interested individuals residing within the borough concerning the applicant's intent to transfer the license. I should point out that Borough Council is not the final say in this matter, because this is, involves the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board, but this is a necessary step under the liquor code as a prerequisite in order to have the license transferred. Before we take public comment, I just would like to note a few procedural items. First, the request, or the completed request for this transfer was received by the borough on January 16, 2019. Under the law, Borough Council has 45 days from that date to take action or render a decision on this request to approve or deny the transfer. The evidentiary standard, or legal standard, that Borough Council uses to judge this request is that it must find substantial evidence that the transfer would be detrimental to the neighborhood or the residents. Before we open it up for public comment, I would ask, is the applicant, or any representative of the applicant here tonight that wishes to make any kind of presentation to Borough Council before we take comment? Is there anyone here from the Montgomery Lodge?
There's a hand.
Okay, why don't, gentlemen, why don't you come up, if you would please? If you'd like to say anything before we open the public hearing and take public comment, it would seem appropriate to me that you provide any additional information you might have, okay? And we have a microphone at the table, and a microphone there, so everyone can hear. And sir, if you could identify yourself, please, your name and address.
My name is Salvatore D. Gambone. I'm a real estate broker, and I specialize in liquor licensing. I've been in the real estate business for almost 59 years, and I've sold liquor licenses for over 55. And I can actually say I've never participated in the sale of a liquor license, where it was ever revoked by the Liquor Control Board, or the particular restaurant failed. When I received a phone call a couple months ago from a friend of mine that said that the club in Pottstown was interested in trying to acquire a club liquor license, since they did lose theirs a few years ago, I said that, you know, I did have a couple clubs that asked me to sell a license for them, and I said, well, before I would agree to do that, I would want to go up to the club and see their premises, see the building, and meet some of the gentlemen and the women that are active in the club today. And I did go up, and I met a very impressive group of gentlemen, older gentlemen, and some very fine ladies there that are active in the club. And I asked them the reason that they lost their license, and they explained that back, I would say probably 10 years ago, as the fellows started to get a little older, they felt that they would let, introduce some of the younger men in the community to come in and get involved, and to kind of add some new blood to the club. Well, now they realize they made a mistake, because it got a little carried away and a little out of hand, and as a result of that, from what I heard, that the license was lost, and the Liquor Control Board revoked it, and that was the end of the license. And the things that impressed me was, in addition to the, I'm going to say there was about 10 gentlemen there and about four women, they do own the building free and clear, and it's a nice building. And they have no mortgage on it. And I told them that if, for me to be able to help them, what I'd like to do, I'd like them to get a mortgage on it, a small mortgage, enough to pay for the license and clear up any little tax debt that they might have, but I would want them to put, improve the outside of the building a little, putting in some more lighting and things like that to kind of dress it up a little, to make it a little more attractive. And the fact that they do own the building free and clear, they could get a good interest rate, and their payment would be very low, so they wouldn't have any financial bind. rate, and their payment would be very low, so they wouldn't have any financial bind. And I did ask them how many members they have now. They have about 35, like, senior citizen-type members. I'm going to say that the youngest one that I met was about 50 years old. And, and they have women involved, and they were a very nice group of women. So, I felt confident that if they were given a second chance, and they would, they feel as strongly about their club as they claim they do, and they, and they told me, they told me a couple things. One, that they are recognized by the IRS on a 501(c)(3) or (8), and also that they do run a lot of activities for the children in the area. Because when I was up there, it was before Christmas, and they had a Christmas party come, and then they had a Halloween thing and stuff like that, which is good, but, but I told them that the fact that they have such a nice building on a second floor, I think they could get into, the fact that they are recognized by the IRS, that they could get into getting foundations to donate funds, so they can put in an after-school program. Now, in a borough in Orestowne, where I live, I was president of a police athletic league for 50 years, and we purchased a, an abandoned armory, and we totally rehabbed it, where we put in classrooms, and we had a education committee and things like that. We put in computer stations for the children and things like that. So, I thought that if they're going to get involved, and, and want to run a real legitimate organization, they're the thing, the type of things that I think they should consider to go forward. So, that's about all I have to say, and if anybody has any questions, I can answer them, or if any of the gentlemen in the, if you want any of the members of the club to say anything, they're welcome to come up, and I don't want to hold you up any longer.
Mr. Gambone, we'll ask if anyone wants to come up, but thank you. Just so I'm clear, you're not a club member, correct?
No, I'm not, I'm not a club member.
You're not a club-
I'm a real estate broker, that's just helping them with acquiring a liquor license, and if we do get an approval, we'll have an attorney to represent the club, that'll, I'll work with him to do the paperwork and things, but we will have an attorney to draw up all the proper documentations.
Of course. All right, thank you. Is there anyone else, before we open up to the public, anyone from the club that wants just to make any statement to Borough Council, given you're the applicant?
My name is Vincent Artis. I reside at 604 North Charlotte Street, Pottstown. Been a resident here for over 50-some, 60 years. And we are applying for our liquor license, and I know that the, the start of this has to come through Borough Council, as was stated previously. I'm not here to point fingers at the old administration, I think that would be politically unfair, but I must say that the situation that has came about was making bad decisions, and also bad problem-solving solutions. The position, the position that I hold, I have been meeting with the previous Chief of Police, and also the President Chief of Police. In the last few years, we have established within the guidelines of the former Chief, a five-year action plan. And I know that a lot has been said about the incidents that has, that has happened down at Montgomery House Lodge. First of all, I'm a person that I, I, there's no tolerance, I, I don't do that. I, I've been, a lot of committees in Pottstown, open space committees, which was a liaison to the Montgomery County Open Space. I was President, Vice President of Parks and Recreation, presently a Social Service Commissioner, and also started, was one of the co-founders of the Pottstown Patriots, after taking over from a defunct football league, and eventually turning over to the Powell Police. Also was the co, the founder of Ricket Dix Basketball, Children, Middle School, Elementary Schools, excuse me, Elementary School Basketball Team, where it was involved boys and girls. I, I ended up with over 200 kids, fourth and fifth, fifth and sixth graders. I took a lot of them to Bloomsburg College, to see what a college campus looked like, to try to give them inspiration to continue being a good resident in Pottstown. And so, we also was established in Pottstown, years ago, with, which liaison with the Pottstown Police Department, No Place for Hate. And my position on this is that, you know, I, I, I look at this, and I see some numbers that, I, I, I'll be honest, they're disturbing, but if you look at our action plan that we put in place within the three years, if you was, start off with some of the highest points, you know, 2013, 173 calls, so on and so forth, since our action plan has been in place, and has dropped down, 2016, three. Now, I'm coming from a, the highest number of maybe 173 calls, 2016, three calls, okay? 2017, eight calls, 2018, 2018, 16 calls, 2017, eight calls, which, the drop, there, there's something happening, and there's something happening positive there. And I feel that as long as we continue to try to beautify our body, control our membership, which is all in our guidelines, our closing time, being community-friendly, I don't think, if you put this, the people that are in place as officers now, we probably have an average age of probably about 65, I don't think nobody can, or, or, it'd be very few of them that can run the 100-yard meter in about a half-minute, you know? So, and, and saying that, when I'm saying, these people love Pottstown. I'm a resident of Pottstown, been, know most of the people in this room here. And I'm, I, with a chance, I know that we can fulfill, that we, we're tired of, tired of being looked upon as the bully, or the, or the bad guys. There's no bad guy on, on, on this administration, and at the same token, we don't want to be looked upon as being a eyesore. We want to look at, we want to look at that we are a cornerstone of Pottstown, and we want to be part of it. In the future, in the past, we have a supported children's Christmas party that we do annually, we get over 183 kids in our building, and this is strictly for the neighborhood, is the same thing for the kids' Halloween party. We do an Easter egg hunt. We, at one time, used to do it down the park, run out the park, but then we do it on our own property. We pass out hams and turkeys to the less fortunate families during the holidays. We participated in the last two National Night Out in Pottstown here. We also do charity events, where if someone is, have a terminally ill member of the family, we hold a charity function, that the donation goes to the family, regardless of how much money we raise. And also, we also participated in the last two years, the Fourth of July Parade. And these are things that has been done since we have adopted our five-year action plan. And so, I see the progress, I see the, the, the progress in the mindset of the members that are there, and yes, we have some things that we still are building upon, our membership rules, we're going over that, background checks. I, you know, I, I do not want any unwanted myself around in a, in a positive atmosphere. I think that you're only asking for trouble, and I think we got a program that we're on the right track, and like I said, if you can reflect back on our numbers again, you can see that where the progress has been made. These are serious people, and I, and, and also, like, I can't see sometimes, just because, hypothetically, if you have one bad police officer shut the police department down, that, that, that's, that doesn't make sense to me. And Borough Council, the council prior to, that was prior to you, and the council today, you just don't dissolve Borough Councils and say, "No more," just because you had a bad council. There was mistakes making, I'll be the first one to say it. How can we prevent this in the future? I know that's going to be a question that's, is going to be asked. I'm saying, as long as we improvise and improve on our daily action plan, it's going to get down to zero tolerance. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Artis. Mr. President, we have quite a full meeting room here compared to our normal, normal council meetings, so, at, at this point, I would suggest we hear from the public that wishes to provide comment, which is the purpose of this public hearing. So, if anyone in the audience wishes to address Borough Council with respect to the request of the Montgomery Lodge, now would be the time to do that. We would recognize you, we'd ask you to come forward to the microphone, state your name and address, and then provide whatever comment you believe is relevant to Borough Council to consider as part of this application and transfer process. I see a young lady, there, there isn't any right now.
So, this, um-
Hold us, one second. If, if council wishes to set a time limit, you can. Again, this is a public hearing, this is not the normal public comment period of the meeting, so if council wishes to do so, you certainly can do a reasonable time limit, if you choose, but we should do that before we get started.
I just, one second, do you want me to do my portion-
No, no.
-now or later?
No, we're, we're asking, would council like to set a time limit on, on each public-
I, I say no.
Okay.
I thought maybe three minutes, but that's fine. I agree with the three minutes, with the amount of people that could be coming up.
Three, okay. Okay, let me ask this. Ginny, would you have a roll call vote on a three-minute time limit?
Uh, no.
Vice President Culp?
No.
Counselor Lebedinsky?
Yes.
Counselor Lindsey?
No.
Counselor Paez?
Yes.
Counselor Proxel?
Yes.
President Lee?
Yes.
Motion carries four eyes, three nays.
So, procedurally then, just for everyone's information, there will be a three-minute timeframe, please choose your comments wisely, and certainly we'll do our best to accommodate everyone. So, ma'am, your full, your name and address, please?
My name is Ena Dunmire Swinson, and I reside at 661 Walnut Street. I've lived there for 14 years. I have seen the ups and downs of the neighborhood. I greatly respect the House Lodge for the community outreach that they conduct in our neighborhood. In the past few years, since they've lost their liquor license, though, I feel like our community has greatly improved. We don't have the high incidence of crime that we were having late at night on the streets. There were shootings, there were vehicle break-ins, there were home robberies. I don't have facts to support that at this time, but those are experiences that I've had in the, in the neighborhood. My fear, without having, without knowing what their actual action plan is, that should they obtain the liquor, another liquor license, that we would fall back to the old ways of the neighborhood, and I don't want to see that happen, nor do I think anyone else wants to see that happen. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to address council?
Yeah, but can we have your name and address, please? My name's Diane Crum. I live on Landover Street in the borough. I'd like to congratulate the House Club on all the family and children-oriented things you've done, I think, the last five years. You have done many things that are good for the community, but from what I've heard, I don't see any reason for giving you the liquor license.
Ms. Crum, please direct your comments to council, not the applicant.
That's why I'm not sure where the microphone-
Mm-hmm.
I don't see any reason to give them a license at the moment. They don't have the procedure completely set. They have done much good, but to put it in the pudding, the only way I could see, and I doubt it should be legal, would be for them to put up a very large bond, that they would lose at the first police call, shooting, or et cetera. So, I think that they're too early, too soon, maybe in a couple more years, but I really congratulate them on all the family and children-oriented programs that they run in, but just not yet.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else that wishes to provide comment to council on this topic?
My name's Mary Walsh. I live at 636 Walnut Street. I've been there for approximately nine years, and as being a corner property and having perfect view of what's happened over in the past few years, the last few, you know, four or five years has been quite quiet. I've been sort of afraid of going out of my house when, and being woken up at 2:00 in the morning. If they can, if the House Lodge can provide, you know, a proper plan of your closing earlier, so we're not wasting our time waking up at, you know, hearing all the police come, I would appreciate that. That's all I would like to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, someone else that wishes to?
My name is Prentice Watts, and I'm the homeowner of 622 Walnut Street. I am actually currently working with the Pottstown Score, Mr. Alessin, I believe is his name, on really cleaning up the community, and helping veterans find homes, and also feeding the homeless. And one of my main goals were really to clean up Montgomery County, and definitely spread my nonprofit organization, which is what I'm working with him with. On a side note, I think that the Montgomery Lodge, I'm always trying to figure out why there's always so much chaos going on over there. I don't really know what they do, but late at night, there's a lot of, a lot of noise, not every day, just days that they're there, it's very disruptive. There's been fights, physical fights, that you can actually see out, you know, out the window or out the door. I don't know if I would completely agree with, you know, letting them obtain the liquor license, and I don't also think that there should be a place to buy alcohol all over town. There's already the Redners Grocery Outlet, and there's also giant food stores that are both now selling wine, beer, and liquor. And I think there's a lot of other things you can do as well, to have fun without drinking. So, I guess that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Anyone else wish to address council on the topic?
Hi, yes, my name's Christopher Carter. I live at 622 Walnut, well. I honestly don't think they should get a liquor license. They don't act like upstanding citizens when they are coming out of the Lodge on occasion. I'm not going to say it's every time, but there has been fights, like, when you see a fight outside your window, where a man is knocked unconscious, and they just go and get into their cars and leave, no ambulance call, no cops on the scene, then that's a problem. They have arguments and disputes outside the club, not in the club, but outside the club. You live right across the street, you can't miss it. It's loud enough for us to hear inside our bedroom, that's bad. If they want a liquor license, they need to think twice. That's my opinion.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Carter. Anyone else wish to address council? So, our police department have any comments? Okay, sir? Yes?
My name is Gary Clifford, 605 Walnut Street, which happens to be the Elton. I would just like to bring this to light. A lot of things that hap- A lot of things that happen here in Pottstown are blamed on the Elks. It might happen a block away, two blocks away. And I would like to also say that if you ever came down Franklin Street, when the kids are getting out of school, the middle school, they're tearing up, the kids are tearing up the people's property, and you have, I don't know how many, police cars coming by all the time. I say that to ask you this, the Borough Council, as well as anybody else in this room. Who do you punish? The kids for walking in the street, in the middle of the street, which I seen a young man get hit last week, I should say bumped by a truck? He was okay, but who do you blame? Was that driver going to be blamed? Or the child walking in the middle of the street? Or the Pottstown School District? What do you do? Shut them down? I'm quite sure that's not the answer. All I'm saying is, a lot of things go on where Montgomery Lodge has been blamed for years, just because they are there on that corner. Years ago, it used to be a bar called Logan's Bar. They got all the blame. They're not here anymore. But once again, let's just think about it. Who's being blamed all the time for something that might happen a block away? And the other thing is, Montgomery Lodge has been in the 600 block of Walnut Street for 50 years. The ones who just moved in, I'm quite sure you knew they were there before. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clifford. Anyone else wishes to address Council? No? Okay. I think Counselor Kirkland, you indicated you had something you wanted to add?
Yeah. Well, I was unable to do so because I was at work, but my wife went door-to-door and talked to about, she probably went to about 50 homes, I guess. Talked to a lot of people, got a lot of statements. And the vast majority of the people in the neighborhood, about 75%, does not want them to have a license. They talk about fights at night. You know, one gentleman talked about, he would be in bed at night, nine, 10 o'clock at night, and, you know, in their parking lot, you know, there'd be fights going on. You could hear them yelling at each other, you know, vulgar language, their children can hear it, you know, and it's still the night, you could hear it clearly. And, you know, they talk about, you know, just, you know, the fact that there's disruption as they come out. You know, as they come out, there's disruption in the streets. Not all the time, but enough to be an annoyance to the neighborhood. The few people who said it was fine for them to get the license, said it under the understanding that, well, you know, we don't want to be the one to hinder them from having their own business or from making money, you know. You know, they don't think they should have it, but we don't want to hinder them from making money as a business, so let them have it. That was, that was the general opinion of people who said yes. But as far as the, as far as the overall consensus, like I said, about 75% worth, they, the neighborhood was clearly against them having the license. They felt it was a detriment.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Kirkland. I think everyone's aware, Mr. Kirkland is actually the ward counselor of the 7th Ward, which the property is located, so, all right.
I live in 19 South Kind Street, and I have a bar right in the corner of High Street. I have fights, people men of the night, police coming all the time, and they're still running. I think they should give a chance to those people. Maybe the first chance is they lose the license, fine, but we should give it a chance to open and have a license.
Okay. So anyone else from Council want to make any comments? You're not required to. This is more of a legislative hearing to entertain the public comment, and...
Well, I'd say it's, you know, quite a shame. I talked to my predecessor, Mark Gibson, which knows the people that run it now very well, and I know they are, you know, very good people and pillars of the community. It's just kind of a shame that, I guess, the real issue when the club was rented out for private parties, in particular, where things really got heated there, and unfortunately continues to be, you know, police presence there. And I think Chief Markovich had, one of our police officers canvassed the neighboring houses as well, and very, some results is, Mrs. Kirkland, is that they're adamantly against it.
Okay, all right. Anything else from the front?
Yes. I am left at this time with two concerning questions. If the license was revoked in 2014, why, four years later, in 2018, were there still 16 police calls to this address? Not across the street, not a block away, two blocks away, but to this address? And my second question is, if I understood you correctly, Mr. Gambone, they have 35 active paid members right now. Is that sustainable? Can they keep this club going with only 35 members? Or are the members bringing in, each one comes with a handful of friends, or I don't know how this operates?
Well, at the, at the present time, from the conversations that I've had with the gentlemen that are here and at the club, they have 35 adult members, and it's a category of actual members. They do belong to a national organization, and then they, if they acquire a license and they're, and they're going to have food and beverages there, well, then they can sign up social members. And I know the thing that they're most sorry about was the fact that they realize they made mistakes, and, and they, they've agreed that, one of the things that they told me was they were going to close at 11:00 PM unless it was an actual formal function being held by the club where they're going to be responsible for whoever's there. Now, with a club liquor license, nobody can come in off the street and buy a beverage, an alcoholic beverage. You have to be a member. And what they want to do is, they will not take on any members, but the requirement is that they're going to pay a fee upfront to get the state police report to make sure that that person who they issue a social membership to does not have any police record. If they do, they'll reject their application. They won't give them a membership. So they realize that things weren't great five years ago, and they're older now, and they realize that they have a club that they have pride in, and they want to do good things in a community. The thing is, if they are able to sell beverages and more food, they could have more income and run a more active organization, and have a little more money to spread around. But they are assuming responsibility, and, and if the neighbors say that they saw all these things, they're going to pay for it, whether you approve them or not. So the thing is, I just feel that the gentlemen that are left and the women here, now, none of them got up and speak, but, you know, and I guess you don't want to prolong the meeting either, but if a couple of them got up and said something, it might give you an idea of how they realize they want to run the club from here on in. Now, because they get a club liquor license, that don't mean that that's, they have that for the rest of their life. They can lose that in one month or two months if the, if they don't control it the way they say they're going to control it. And, and the gentleman that was here earlier indicated to me that he's had meetings with the chief of police, the former chief of police, and they set up an agenda that they want them to follow, and he wants to follow it. They want to, they want to do all these things, but the thing is, if they violate any of these obligations, they can lose their license again. They're going to pay $30,000 for a liquor license, a club liquor license, and they're going to borrow money on their building for, as collateral, to pay for the club. And they, they also want to do some outside improvements in lighting and things like that to really make it a, and, and dress up the building some, to make it more attractive. So if they're going to go through this expense and take on this responsibility, I just feel as though they've kind of convinced me that they're going to do a good job, and they want to do a good thing, and they wanted to get into other areas where they can help out in the community, to the people that are members of their club, and their children and grandchildren. But I don't live in that 600 block, so I really don't have the ability or the right to try to speak for anybody else, but I can only say that they impressed me enough to come up here and represent them and help them and hope that they can get approved for a liquor license. And I just, and they can lose the license just like that as quick as they abort it, and you do have a police department. And the thing is, if they violate anything, they can be closed down, you know, quickly. You can revoke their, their health license or whatever, anything that they don't do, you know, but that's the only thing. I just wanted to give them a fair chance to know that, you know, they could deserve a second chance, but it's up to the people that make the decisions, and, you know, I'll answer any questions you have, and that's why I sat here, but I didn't want to be a cheerleader for them. I just want to give you an honest opinion, and I've been selling restaurants for over 50 years, and nobody that I ever got involved with ever lost a liquor license or had it one revoked or anything, or, or failed financially, because if I didn't think that they were qualified and capable enough to want to make the commitment, I wouldn't bring them to a bank to get them a mortgage, because I'm going to have to be the guy to bring them there, and I don't want to do something that's going to be harmful to anybody, but that's about the best I can say.
Since you are our resident expert in this area, is there a way that a temporary license could be granted for like six months?
Well, no, when you buy the license. But see, the thing is, I mean, they own a building free and clear, and the building, I mean, in my estimation, not an appraiser, but it's got to be worth between the large parking lot, $175,000 to $200,000. Now, they own that building. They can sell it, and, and these 35 guys could divide that $200,000 up 35 ways. But they want to have a club there, and they're going to borrow money, so they're going to have an obligation, and they're going to have an obligation to counsel if you approve it. They've met with the chief of police, and they don't want to let him down. So I, I feel as though personally that, that they're going to do it right. If they do it again, they're going to do it right, because they got more to lose than, you know, something to lose, and I, and I think it's their pride, too, the fact that they belong to a national organization, and, you know, they want to be proud when they go to these conventions, that they have a, a club like all the other ones around the country or wherever they are, you know. But...
I understand, then, your answer to my question is that there is no temporary license or conditional.
No, no.
It's either all or nothing.
You can make it temporary. If they get out of hand and the neighbors complain, LCB will come out and close them up in a heartbeat, because LCB knows that they violated their, their rights the first time by letting these younger men do things and get carried away. They didn't control them enough. Now, they, they tried to, they had an attorney who's a friend of mine, and I didn't know them at the time, but I found out since then, that represented them, trying to get the Liquor Control Board to reconsider their revocation, but they didn't. The Liquor Control Board said, that's it. So they, in five-year time, they've waited, and now they feel as though they've learned their lesson, and they're willing to go forward, and they want to improve what they did before and maybe build up on it that would help the community. But I, I totally an opinion.
Okay. Very good.
I could clarify the record really quick. It's my understanding that, and Chief, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but it's my understanding that Mr. Artis met with our chief of police and our former chief of police, and then he separately put a plan in place. It's not my understanding that he put a plan in place with the chief of police to make this work. Is that correct, Chief?
Well, I believe maybe the chief, Chief Drumheller, he sat down, and they began making a plan, but I can't answer for Chief Drumheller or what happened then. But I've sat down with Mr. Artis, and we've talked about the Elks. And I've shared with him my report that you guys also have, and so there's no secret of what was reported. And just to, to make sure the facts are right, the public nuisance calls and the public problems that we had with the Elks aren't with the members themselves. If the Elks members that were sitting here today were to have a party at the Elks tonight, I'm sure we would have no problems there. The issues happen when the building is rented out on a Friday and Saturday night, and essentially it's a private party to, to private citizens, and it becomes a, an after-hours nightclub, essentially, and it's open until 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning. And normally, I can't speak for the members of the Elks, but I know when I used to respond when I was on patrol, a lot of times there were no members from the Elks there, so we were kind of left just empty-handed, like, what do we do now? There's a huge mass of people here, and it's become an after-hours nightclub. The issue is not the members of the Elks. And you see in my report, I've listed good and bad, and I've shared that with Mr. Artis also, so they would know what I was going to report.
Okay, thank you, Chief, and I just think everyone does have this report that the chief had prepared, so we'll make that part of the record as well, so there's no misunderstanding. Unless there...
Chuck.
Yeah.
May I say something?
Certainly. Please come forward.
I want to work with, with the chief. Additionally, I was brought into this through Chief Drumheller as a liaison...
Bishop Dedman, could you just state your name and address, please? We, we all know you, but we're creating a record.
Everett, Everett Dedman, 79 North Hanover Street. I was brought into this initially with Chief Drumheller as a liaison between the Elks and the community. And as far as our new chief, when he was brought into this, getting the information, they had already talked with Chief Drumheller on trying to get an action plan together. They went ahead, I'm witness to that, they went ahead and got an action plan, they presented it to the former chief. The chief agreed, they tweeted it, and saw whatever needed to be done. I will say this, having been there with them from the beginning, I've seen some improvements. I see the tenacity that they have to make things right. I think, I think my, my concern is not the Elks, but is the atmosphere of this community. That's my concern. My concern is that there is, there is, through this community, there has been seeds sown of fear mongering. This is an establishment that has been in the community a long time. Has been on that corner a long time. Unfortunately, this is one of the only, one of the only establishments that's in the middle of a residential area. And it is no secret that the corner where it is is a busy corner. It's a corner, it's a busy corridor for crime, and I agree that much of the crime that has been committed in that community have been put in the hands of the Elks. But I think, again, my concern is, and I speak it again, is that this community at large, because it is an organization of color, and I will say it, and that there have been materials already printed out in this community to get people minds fixed on saying it's not going to work. Any other establishment who had problems, once they came under new management, is usually resolved. They are under new management, and all they're asking for is a chance. Now, they have this stuff in place, they're trying to do it, and you got people with newsletters going out talking about what will work, what won't work, this and that, and it's getting in the mind. I'm so sick of the attitude of this community. Not only is it there, but it's downtown, in the business area. I came here one night in council meeting and heard some people from Padita, from, from, from downtown concerned about somebody three blocks up the street opening up their business. And somebody said here that night, well, my customers said they won't come down there because of the people. Those people, that's what it was said, those people. So if this community is going to be what we say we are, we need to forget this stuff. I mean, if this was three blocks down the street, we wouldn't be having this. It's under new management, they're trying to do their job. I'm only speaking because I've been there at the beginning. I've watched them turn stuff around. Yes, they have worked with the community. Yes, they have done things for the youth. Yes, they're trying to do stuff. Yes, they got video cameras coming up. Yes, they're trying to do this. Yes, they made a mistake because they put young people in charge. But now, as you see, everybody's 65 and older. But now, as you see, everybody's 65 and older, as they talk about, they want to change. So my suggestion is, just give them a chance. And when you talk about, "There's no temporary license," if they mess up, they mess up. And, you know, so if they mess up, they mess up. But at least they try. I think we're in the land of second chances. I mean, most of us have had a second chance, because most of us have messed up at least 15 times. Okay. And I mean, most of us have messed up. So that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. If there's no one else that wishes to address for our council, I would suggest that we close the public hearing. As I pointed out, your role in this is somewhat limited. You either vote to approve or deny the transfer. We're not getting into issuing licenses or licenses with conditions or plans of attack or how it's supposed to be policed. That all rests with the LCB. By my calculation, unless you have a special meeting, you will need to take action on this request at the meeting on Monday. So I would suggest that certainly at the public comment part of the meeting on Monday, there can be more public comment on this issue if anyone wants to participate. But as far as the procedural public hearing, that would now be closed. So unless there's any questions from council, we can move on to the next item on the agenda.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Garner. It's at this time, I'm going to back up to number eight, the zoning ordinance amendments.
Yep.
Okay. Mr. Keller?
All right. Over the past several months, we've been working diligently with the ad hoc zoning committee county planners and paid to reduce the cumbersome requirements in our zoning ordinance that often lead to confusion and unnecessary red tape for visitors and developers. While we plan to take, eventually plan to take a holistic look at the entire zoning ordinance...
Justin, we can't hear you back here.
All right. I'll pause until everyone leaves the room.
Sorry.
While we plan to take a holistic look at the entire zoning ordinance, the immediate focus of the is in the downtown district where we are experiencing substantial growth. We have two zoning ordinance amendments to present for your consideration on Monday night. One of these changes represents the first step in a zoning ordinance overhaul to better clarify uses which are permitted and restricted. The second change relaxes requirements for permitted businesses to serve alcohol in designated outdoor dining areas. Both of these changes are consistent to promoting the vision of an active and vibrant downtown. And with me here tonight, I have our county planner who has been helping us through this process, Brian Polzac.
Good evening, councilors. So I'm going to go briefly over the substantive changes to the downtown district and the outdoor dining amendments that you have in front of you. So basically, like Mr. Keller said, the changes largely reflect use changes. We're not changing any of the dimensional or design standards of the district. This is largely focused on updating and modernizing the uses that are permitted in the downtown district, making sure that we have the uses that we actually, that we want in the downtown, making sure more of the uses are by right, which means that there's no additional zoning requirements for those, and excluding more of the inappropriate uses that we think should belong elsewhere in the, in the borough. So largely, as it stands, the existing uses don't necessarily encapsulate all of the uses that we want in the downtown, nor does it capture all the inappropriate ones that we want to exclude. So that was part of the reason why we are doing this overhaul. These amendments add more definitions of new uses as well as additional definitions and regulations for existing uses to clarify more specifically the requirements that we want to see in the downtown, as well as, like I said, just overall clarifying uses that are also, occur outside the downtown as well. So firstly, we're adding a lot of new uses to the downtown district. Some of these already exist in form in the downtown, but we're making sure that we sort of explicitly talk about them. And many of these are, like I said, by right, which means that they don't have, they don't need any additional review or requirements, making it more business-friendly. So this isn't all of them, but a lot of these focus on clarifying retail uses, restaurants up, as well as art base uses, so art galleries, individual artists, studios, and artisanal hand-based manufacturing, which is becoming a larger trend in some redeveloping and revitalizing communities. So we want to make sure we include some of those. Also clarifying some of the personal care uses, which are largely service-based, so like salons, beauticians, that sort of use, just clarifying some of those definitions. We're also clarifying the types of restaurants that we would be defining. So we're making a difference between sit-down restaurants and then also takeout and prepared food establishments, so making a difference there. Also allowing outdoor dining specifically as a use in the downtown, which I'll talk about briefly in a bit. Probably the most substantial definitions we added were for mixed-use buildings. Currently, in the existing ordinance, there isn't any regulations as to how or why a building should be mixed-use. So we clarify what uses are permitted in those areas, in the buildings, and making sure that we get sort of like the ideal mixes of uses and the highest and best uses. Some of the uses that we're proposing to delete in the downtown districts, and I should also clarify that these only, these only apply to the downtown district itself. A lot of these definitions only apply for the downtown district. And so currently, there are uses called direct service uses and direct retail uses. These are, you know, these can be useful in terms of allowing a lot of types of businesses, but we felt that ultimately these definitions may be too broad. So some of these uses, the direct service and direct retail, are actually being replaced by a lot of the more specific uses that I just described on the previous slide. The committee also thought that the uses that were deemed institutional or civic uses, we would also delete, really because they weren't defined in the ordinance, so we wanted to make sure we didn't, we were inadvertently including uses that we may not be necessarily, you know, desirable. There's also a section of prohibited uses that was defined in the existing ordinance, but they were actually only prohibited in a certain area of the downtown. And I'm going to talk about this on the next slide, but they largely focused on pawn shops and check-catching establishments, tattoo parlors, massage parlors. So we decided to actually move them entirely out of the downtown and not just out of a specific area of the downtown. So we're going to be totally excluding them from, and relocating them somewhere else in the borough. We also are proposing to eliminate all of the residential-only uses. So this includes single-family attached, so row homes, twins, as well as apartment buildings which have no commercial uses in them. And this was done to emphasize the commercial aspect of the downtown district. We're still allowing mixed-use buildings to have apartment uses on the top floors, the second floor and above, but largely, we didn't want to maintain single buildings which were just made entirely of apartments, because we felt that, we wanted to make sure to activate the streets, and the way to do that is through active storefronts and other types of commercial uses. So that's the reason why we are proposing to relocate them elsewhere. We're also eliminating drive-through facilities as a potential conditional use, so we're proposing to relocate them entirely to another district as well. Downtown districts tend to want to emphasize walkability and pedestrian-friendly aspects. And drive-through facilities obviously are automobile-based, and so we didn't necessarily want to continue to encourage those types of facilities as well. And like I said, there's a provision in the ordinance which restricted certain uses to certain locations in the downtown, and this focuses, for example, on High Street between York and Evans Streets. There's a lot of uses that aren't permitted currently in those areas. And then, like I said, there are, we want to encourage as many uses as possible, but also to make sure that, you know, if there's a prohibited use in an area, then we want to make sure that it's just prohibited in the entire district and not just in a certain So like I said, the prohibited uses, which were previous in the district, we needed to make sure we relocated them somewhere else. And so we actually defined these, because these largely weren't defined in the ordinance itself. So we made sure to actually give hard definitions to these. And we relocated these to a number of districts, largely focusing on the Gateway West District. But it's just to essentially make sure that we define these and we put them in another zoning district which are more appropriate for them, to make sure that there isn't any confusion as to where else they may be permitted in the downtown. So some of these also include payday lenders, pawn shops, wholesale facilities. These are types of uses that, like I said, are more appropriate in sort of more automobile-oriented areas. And lastly, the outdoor dining areas, this is a separate amendment, but the definition of this is important, obviously, because we're also adding this into the downtown district, where we think that outdoor dining is a very, you know, very appropriate and very desirable use. So like I said, currently, there are no provisions in the ordinance for these, for outdoor dining at all. And this largely is needed because currently there's a prohibition on having open containers of alcohol in the public right-of-way. And in most cases, when there's a street-level business, the outdoor dining is actually happening on the sidewalk. So that would be in conflict with your existing ordinance. So these amendments actually rectify that. We make sure we change the open container law to exempt outdoor dining areas from that prohibition. And so we basically just regulate where a dining area can happen in relation to a business, and it's usually just adjacent to that business or on the sidewalk in front of the business. And we just add some common sense setbacks from transit stops, building entrances, driveways, and circulation areas, and parking lots, as well as street intersections, to obviously make sure that we're not impinging on existing facilities for people walking or trying to access transit. This ordinance also ensures that the walking space of a sidewalk isn't infringed upon by an outdoor dining area. Ultimately, there would be a permit that's necessary for these outdoor dining areas. So the borough will be able to make sure initially that there isn't any issue with narrowing the sidewalk. And like I said, these areas are exempted from the open alcohol container ordinance as long as patrons stay within that area and they're not walking around ultimately with the, with the container. So that's my summary of these. And I could take any questions if you all have any.
So again, just in conclusion, we're looking for council's motion to authorize these ordinance for advertisement at the Monday night meeting. Are there any other, are there any questions?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
You mentioned about drive-through. Does that just have to do with dining, or is that, because I think, doesn't the Rite Aid have a drive-through there at Evans and High? So would that, is it, you're restricting that?
Yes, yeah, that's correct. I mean, all the existing drive-throughs would be allowed to remain.
Okay.
It's just that we would, the borough wouldn't be allowing any new drive-throughs at this time.
Yeah. That was basically my question, was, I was thinking banks.
Yeah. If you have a business that is not in compliance, after we would enact this new ordinance, you're perfectly fine to continue to operate that business even though it's not in compliance. There's not an issue with that. But once there's a change in use or discontinuation of use, that could be subject, that property could be subject to the new zoning ordinance regulations at that point.
Situation, or would it, is that a hard line or that?
No, that, they would have to come in and seek a zoning variance.
And Joe, that's based on appellate case law is what constitutes an abandonment of a non-conforming use. So that would have to be analyzed based on a factual situation more so than anything.
Hope you guys like it. We spent an eternity working on it, so.
About a year.
Thank you very much. And next, we have a presentation from Hanover Square Commercial Group. Mr. Burley?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Tom Burley. Some of you might have seen me up here before. I represent Hanover Square Commercial. I've been working as a general manager for a developer in the Pottstown area for the past five years. I've worked on a number of projects, both in the approvals and the construction end of the developments. The Hanover Square Townhome Development, the Hanover Square Commercial Development, and also the 300 Cherry Street, the former Meyer Hoffman Sons shirt factory, which I'm proudly to announce we recorded the plans today, and we're looking to get started on that in the next couple of weeks. So where I'm, as I showed my first slide up here, that is the sign that's currently being manufactured for the corner of Industrial Highway and South Hanover Street. I'm really excited to show that, because I think it's, I think it looks really nice right now, and it's going to fit in between the bricklayers that we already currently I want to share some good news, some potential good news tonight. As part of the Hanover Square Commercial Development, we've had the four townhouses. We also have the middle building on the corner of Hanover and Industrial. We do have two current businesses residing in there, Dona Envy and Samana Holistic Center. The good, potential good news I have for everybody tonight is that the, we have put the next commercial building under agreement of sale. It is a contingent agreement with Ross, Quinn, and Plopper Attorneys at Law. This is for the first floor of 192 South Hanover Street, which in the Hanover Commercial Development was also known as Building D is a Void. Kind of give you a little bit of background on the sale. Stephen Ross, who's, who currently owns a business in the borough... Stephen Ross, who currently owns a business in the borough, approached me about a year ago because his current office space did not work for him. He was looking at alternatives to move not just within Pottstown but also out of Pottstown. He and I kept a dialogue going for the past year, and we recently came to an agreement of scope of work regarding an office space. And this kind of all comes to why I'm here tonight. I've worked with Stephen closely to try to come up with a plan that makes sense for him. And we had... Now that we are moving towards a sale of one tenant at this property as opposed to four tenants, this building was originally planned for four separate tenants. They were each going to be 1,100 square foot spaces. Now, as Stephen would plan to put a full office on the entire first floor of this building. It's exciting because he's going to keep his business in Pottstown. This is 20-plus employees. This is the current building, and the design is somewhat obsolete because of, if you notice, there are four entrances on the building currently. He would like to, for security and for access of the building workflow, he would like to reduce that to one space or one door opening to the building for clients. What we're here tonight seeking is borough... I took this plan, a new plan, to Keith Place, and he asked me to bring it to Borough Council to get the blessing of Borough Council on it before moving forward with the plan. So as you can see, this is the plan that was approved by Borough Council. It shows a different layout than what I'm about to show you. This is the plan that Stephen and I had worked together. Stephen's big thing was that he wanted to add more brick to the building. His... He was... He's a very traditional guy. You'll hear from him shortly. And he wanted to have the entire first floor of his office be... To be brick. So we've worked back and forth for a couple of months to try to find something that would work. We recently came to an agreement, and the minute I had that agreement, I took the plans to Keith Place and hence why I'm here tonight. Here is the proposed plan that we've put together for building B. So as you can see, we have reduced the entrances. There used to be entrances at four points on the building. The current plan, the new plan, would only have a main entrance coming off the south side of the building, which is facing the parking lot. That if anybody's familiar with the donut shop, it would be facing the donut shop. There would no longer be door openings from Hanover Street, nor would there be a door opening for clients on the South Street side. In addition to the change in the four entrances, he would like... We would like to, as you can see, we've changed the style of the building a little bit. We would have 13 feet of brick going up to the second-floor windows. Above those, above the brick would be, and this would be on the front and two sides of the building, above that would be a fiber cement siding that would be consistent with what was used on... In the rest of Hanover Square residential development. As you can see, we have changed the windows to, instead of being arch tops, they are now square tops. That was at request of Stephen Ross to help. He was known for more of an industrial classic building. In addition to these changes, another change that he would like, he and us would like to make is there's currently a fence proposed for the side of the parking lot separating Hanover and the parking lot. We would like to open that area up so that when you're driving up Hanover towards High Street, you would be able to see the front entrance of the building. You can see per our plan, this would be the proposed fence that was agreed upon, which would, in our opinion, would not be slightly on the project. The last thing we would like to talk about, and I know this is something that we would have to get a separate approval for, but I do want to talk about it briefly, is we would like to do a painted brick sign along Hanover Street with gooseneck lamps that would shine down on the brick at night. Here's an example of one, if anybody's familiar with Phoenixville. There's a Blue Bird Distilling. That's the look that we were going for with the gooseneck lamps that shine down on the building. And here's another from at night time. In conclusion, I'd like to request that you guys support this plan. We are excited at the opportunity of holding a growing business in the community within Pottstown. We think that they want... They're considering investment in Pottstown because they like it here and want to stay. But I do know that they had once decided, or, you know, they had also considered moving away from Pottstown. I'd like to invite Stephen to make a comment on the project and ask for your supportive of plan. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Good evening. My name's Stephen Ross. I have a law office in Pottstown. I've been here since 2005. My office is located next door over the Security Trust Building, 152 East High Street. I occupy the first floor, part of the fourth and part of the fifth, approximately 3500 square feet. I currently have myself as an attorney, I have two other attorneys that are partners, and I have approximately 18, 20 employees plus that. We're looking to move our business into a unified space. Right now, we're on spread out among three floors of that building. And I... Just as a sign that I started there in 2005, I've been there for 14 years. It's been a great experience for me. And I focus my practice on 98% on two areas. I have to say, everything I do is an economic plus to Pottstown because I'm bringing money into Pottstown. Probably 85 to 95% of my business is 75 or more miles away from Pottstown. And the employees that work for me are assisting us in that work. The building that we're looking at, you know, I'm kind of a vintage guy. I like original. I didn't want to put a typical shingle outside of the door. So I wanted to do something unique. So when I looked at this project with Tom, it had columns on the building, and I couldn't put... My idea was to put something on the building that had a painted-on sign, something like you see with Whites and Corns or across the street from my building where it has a Spearmint Gum advertisement or Red Horse Murdering Club. So I wanted to do something real classy like that, that was different, that didn't... That was still vintage and original, that was true to the town. So our idea was to put a sign on the building that was painted, and I wanted to put some real nice classy gooseneck big lamps that charred down on the building on that sign. It's not as important to me to make it visible at night, just to make something look real classy and sharp. So I would appreciate your support if you would get behind that and appreciate your time tonight.
Are there any questions for me regarding the plan or the project?
One other note, too. I don't think... I knew Tom mentioned it, but the building itself inside, it's not a typical office. Really made it, you know, in the plans that we talked about, very open, industrial-like. Some of the architectural features that are part of this building include the awning on the side, that's almost a replicate of the one across the street at the Mississauga Aluminum Processing Plant, where you see the metal, the flat metal roof above the outside door. We're putting that on the side, I think, as part of the plant, so.
And part of the reason for the elimination of the doors into the building was the fact that security of the workspace and also he didn't want to have employees being distracted as, you know... I think when these plans were originally approved, they were for more of a retail-based atmosphere. We're now, we're shifting a little bit to a professional office space. So I think that's why he would like a little bit more privacy than the wide-open windows that went down the Hanover Street.
If I could just give some council members a little more background, because I'm not sure everybody was here when this project was approved. But this Hanover Square Commercial goes back probably to 2006 with a developer prior to Tom. And at that point, when it was approved by council, the focus, in addition to the quality of the units, was always the aesthetics, given it was the gateway to Pottstown, it had visibility on Hanover Street, Industrial Highway, and South Street. So when Tom's company came back, and I believe in 2016, there were some revisions made to the plan, the new buildings that you referred to. One of the conditions that was imposed by council in 2016 was that council wanted to approve what the buildings looked like because that was important. And as Tom points out in one of the slides, that was what the elevation or the appearance of the building was. And obviously, since that was a condition of approval, if they want to make changes, and obviously this is a significant change to what was approved by council, Keith had directed properly him to come to Borough Council to seek your approval of what the change was to be. So that's why they're here presently. This is not what's approved. You've heard what they'd like to change, and in my opinion, it's really up to you to decide if you want to make that change or not. I know Keith has looked at this. I don't want to speak for Keith, but Tom, I think you're aware there is some issues with zoning as with respect to walls versus windows or cutouts. And I'm not certain that anybody's looked at that aspect of this project yet. But from my perspective, if council chooses to approve it, you're approving the appearance of what it looks like, and obviously, the details need to be worked out among our Department of Licensing and Inspections and our Plan Review people. So that's what's in front of you tonight. If you have questions, the folks are here to answer. If you have questions of Keith, he'll be happy to answer them as well. And I presume you guys would like an answer by Monday. Okay? So.
Yeah. First, I'd like to commend Mr. Ross on your commitment to Pottstown, even down to your architectural design choices, you know, keeping true to the tradition of, you know, the brick and trying to make it look as authentic as possible. I appreciate that. The only thing that really stands out to me is the one entrance. If, you know, maybe Mr. Place can answer that question for me. If there was a fire blocking that one exit, where else would the people exit the building? If that entrance was blocked by a fire or something.
Correct. That's a good question. I should have been more clear. That we are looking to eliminate three of the retail entrances. There are, in addition to the one, there are two other entrances on the rear of the building. So there's our emergency access to if there was a fire on one side of the building, we could get out on the other side.
Awesome. Thank you.
Being that I sit on both Planning Commission and the council, I'm going to start with this frame, this elevation. I can tell you that both bodies were quite impressed with what you presented to be our new gateway from the south. It passed without problem at planning, it passed without problem at council. I don't think any of us are going to be happy with this white siding at the top. If you drive in from Trestor County and look at your other brick structures, and if you look at the residential section, what you see driving into town, maybe not the back, but the fronts and the sides and those things visible from Hanover Street and Industrial Highway all have the brick facade that everyone favored. We would like you to maintain that. Now, if you want to raise the amount of brick on the Hanover Street side up to 13 feet, that may be acceptable. But the treatment above that, I really wouldn't want to change. We were quite impressed with this, and we're ready to show it off. And I would hope you would maintain that. Anyone else?
Not... Looking at these pictures you have here, that building is, to me, seems to be smack up against the sidewalk. Is that... Here it shows that there's area for shrubs, and the one that I see now is like right up against the sidewalk. And it seems like when the original plans were for the Hanover Square, it kind of... And I understand that, you know, economically and stuff like that, things had to be changed. And it's not as so, so to speak, pretty as it was originally going to be. I just kind of think this looks really vanilla compared to the original. It's... The top is so plain. I... And I had to, I was wondering also about the exits. But I guess the... There's still going to be entrance... I mean, there's still going to be access there. It's just you can't be able to go in. You'll just... You'll be able to just go out with those exits.
Employees will be able to go in, but clients would be pushed to go towards the exits.
I appreciate your investment. I certainly don't want to scare you away, but it just was to hopefully be a little more consistent with the rest of the sons around it.
I appreciate your feedback. One question I do have for you is making the change to the square top window, is there Is there anyone who would object to that?
Yep. Yes.
Yes.
It's just so, it's... I don't know it.
I see your point. It's not a retail shop, but all the...
Just out of curiosity, did this change come because of... I mean, I know you wanted the change, but did cost have anything involved with this? Or...
Well, I mean, so I think cost always has something. This actually is going to be more expensive to do because there's a lot more brick. He was willing to invest in the brick. But, you know, I know you guys have to vote on it Monday, but, you know, if that ends up that it's not accepted, then we'll have to put our heads together and try to find another path.
It's a right way to do a blend.
The panels that were here originally, where the brick isn't... What were they? What were they? Were they wood stuck? What was that? were they, were they wood stuck, what was that? In the green and the yellow, what?
Those would be a combination of siding and like an AZAC, like plastic sheen.
Okay.
Anywhere you can blend this?
I would have to, you know, we have an agreement of sale right now, contingent based on the drawing that I showed you guys. So there would be different costs involved with different scenarios, so I would have to talk with Mr. Ross and see if that's achievable.
So for expediency, I won't vote for that siding on Hanover Street.
Okay.
The others can speak for themselves. I went through this in planning, we were impressed with this, council's impressed with this. You will close off entrances on the bottom line.
Is it possible to...
Kind of do a hybrid between the first one and the one with the brick on the first floor, you know?
Yeah, that's what they had to say.
Yeah, is that what you were saying? Keeping the...
And I think what I'll have to do is, Mr. Ross, I'll have to look at that option and see if that's achievable. So.
Yeah, everything above that, everything above that is the same as the first option, but the first floor brick.
We can look at that option.
And also the colors, I think the new one is too drastic change color. Maybe we can blend it in a little more, even if it's too dark.
We're not, you know, as far as the colors are concerned, we're open to whatever colors that you guys would...
I think this is more plain.
Yeah, that's what I said.
And over here is more. Hello, welcome to Pottstown. This one is, huh? Pottstown? You gotta be more... Yeah, this one is more.
Well, thank you guys for your feedback.
Okay. Hanover Square. Number 11. We have a president for, oh, Elaine Schaefer. Hi.
Hello.
What do you have for us this month?
Hello, everyone. I'm Elaine Schaefer. I'm with the Skookal River Greenways, and I'm here tonight with two of our staff members. Lysanta Nager is our Americor Vista employee who's here with us for a year. And Jody Wolwenzel is our Artist in Residence. And we're here tonight to present to you two programs that we are planning for this spring and the summer. The first program is a mural on the Skookal River Trail, and Lysanta is going to present that to you first, and then I will present to you the second program.
Hi, good evening. I'm Lysanta Nager. I am Americor Vista for the Skookal River Greenways. So I'm here to present the Pottstown mural rug project. So the purpose of this project is to bring new populations and the community to the trail. So the Skookal River Trail obviously goes through Pottstown and Riverfront Park. And so we want to engage local artists and community members to participate through art on the trail. This project was actually inspired by the Charlotte Range Rail to Trail Organization. They have a mural rug project down in North Carolina that was very similar. They had community members come out, and they had events like this one over here to get community members to actually build a part of the trail and make them feel like they're more a part of it. And so for community involvement, we're going to hold two public meetings, and one will be March 7, and another one will be March 20. And then we have a public installation event as well. And so I'll introduce Jody. Ms. Wenzel was a former Pottstown School District Art Teacher, and she will talk more about the design and leading the community members in creating the design for the trail.
Thank you for your time and opportunity to share this with me. I, when I was told about this project, I was so excited. And then when I was asked to be involved in it, I was beyond thrilled. As an artist, as a member of the community, and also as a trail ambassador, because that trail is just like my second home. And I love it dearly. So I was very excited, and I thought, all right, so what can I do here? How can I involve the community and still, and bring about a great design that everybody can work with? Well, I thought it has to involve the Skookal River Greenway logo. That was, it's just such a beautiful design, and it has the river in, it's abstract, it's the river. Can you show it? It was something. With the river and the land. There it is. So I went out and I measured where I have to, what I have to work with. And it's 120 foot. That's a lot. So I thought, how can I, oops, it's gone. I thought, how can I incorporate this into artwork that the community can share and be part of? And the artist, MC Escher, came into my mind. And he is famous for his tessellations. And if you don't know what a tessellation is, it's a big word that means it's a shape that's in a repeating pattern that has no gaps and no overlays. If you look in the room above you, the ceiling is tessellations. The walls are tessellations. When you walk into the building, the brick building is a tessellation. Also, there's lots of tessellations. You can, if you, I think of corn on the cob, the corn is tessellated, raspberries. I was out on the trail today, and there's lots of tessellations in nature. Pine cones are tessellations. But I was trying to think how we could incorporate all of this into the mural. So we are going to, I'm going to be teaching some classes, and we are going, I'm going to teach people how to do tessellations. And hopefully that they'll be able to incorporate some of the natural plants or the animals that fall on the trail. And in here, and I hope some, hopefully take them, even if you share them with your children or your neighbors or whatever, the directions are in here, the papers in here to do it. All you need is a pencil, scissors, and some tape. They're very easy to do. I'd like to call some people to help me. I thought maybe to do a tessellation here. So the people that have these, do some more now. And maybe the mayor might want one, the architect might want one. Share with your sons. Now I know what tessellation is, right?
I ain't never bought that one yet.
No touch, they don't touch, there's no gaps in between. So I'll put one here, and I'll start one. So, a shape, right? Okay. Mr. Rose, where do you want to put it? Oh, you're so good. The boys are very proud of you. Morsia? You guys are awesome!
God, that was hard.
I think we have them all. Does this remind anybody of anything? Besides a tessellation, kind of a tessellation, you know, where you see something like this? Where?
A honeycomb.
A honeycomb. Yeah. Those little bees are, those insects are really mathematical geniuses, I'll tell you. So I guess that's where I leave it now, because I, yeah, I was told I only have two minutes. So if you get the chance to go and look up Escher, look him up. I knew I wasn't able to mic, point my presentation today. So I tried to do, actually I tried to make myself a folding board here and put Escher on here, because he really manipulated all the shapes then into other animals and things. So, thank you.
So thank you, Jody. That was really great. And if you see on Jody's dress there, too, she really wants to inspire the nature and wildlife of the Skookal River Trail, River Trail into the design as well. So it'd be based off of birds and fish, and also Escher has designs based on that as well. So the timeline, as I said, will be the first public meeting, which will be March 7, and that will be at the First Presbyterian Church in Pottstown from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. And then the second public meeting will be Wednesday, March 20, and that will be at Art Fusion on Front Street, 19464, and that will be from 6:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. as well. And then we have the mural rug installation event, and that will be Saturday, April 27. And Jody will be there along with other community members, and that will be from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. And we also have a rain date for the event, which will be May 4. So the final result would be having just a really great, beautiful trail, mural on the trail. And this will be located at Pottstown Riverfront Park, and the location would be right next to the amphitheater and across from the old pavilion. So we really hope to inspire community residents and just people from Pottstown and all over to connect to the river and hopefully connect to the watershed. So, thank you.
Thank you.
We have some flyers here for that, for anybody who's interested in taking one of them, we'll leave them up here and pass them out. And we really encourage everyone to be a part of it. It's a lot of fun to design it and then put it on the trail, and then it's there forever. And you can walk by and say, oh, I designed that part of that. So the next project we have is a little bit different, it's a little bit later in the summer. Parks on Tap is a program that has been happening in Philadelphia for three years. I'm not sure if any of you are familiar with it, but it's a program that happens every weekend in the summer, and it's an outdoor beer garden that moves from park to park in Philadelphia all summer long. And it has been a wild success in Philadelphia, and it has brought out the citizens of Philadelphia to discover all of these forgotten parks and nooks and crannies of Philadelphia. And it's been just really successful. The company that runs the Parks on Tap in Philadelphia reached us about six months ago with interest of bringing Parks on Tap up the river to the river towns. And we have been working with them for about six months, putting this program together and seeing how it could work. For us, this is a fantastic opportunity to bring a whole new world of people who maybe aren't bikers and aren't kayakers to the riverbanks in these towns up down the river to engage with the river and discover the river in a nice family environment. So what it is, is they come and they set up in a park, and they bring everything. They bring all of the furniture, they bring all of the electricity, the bathrooms, the food, the everything. And they set up for, from Wednesday night, Wednesday evening, Thursday evening, then Saturday and Sunday, and invite the community to participate and come and enjoy the outdoors and the river, and, you know, there's some lawn games and whatnot. And we are introducing into this on the Saturday and the Sunday at all of the locations, free bikes and free kayakings to get the community, for about three hours each Saturday and Sunday, to get the community engaged and to try out kayaking and try out biking on the Skookal River Trail. The six locations that we have arranged for are listed up right there. And as you can see, we would like to propose that Pottstown be the kickoff. And that would be the weekend of June 26 to June 30. In addition to having the free kayaks and bikes on the Saturday and Sunday, we'll also be running our pedal and paddle program on the Saturday from the Pottstown location at Parks on Tap. And then when the pedal and paddle program ends, we'll have a water quality testing demonstration for whoever is interested in testing macro and bird grades and showing them what's in the river and whether it shows it's healthy. You can see there's a picture of one of them sat, one of the Parks on Tap, I believe that's on Skookal Banks in the city. There's food, local wine, local beer, non-alcoholic, and it's, in the city, it's tended to be a very family-friendly endeavor, and there are a lot of kids and families involved in these. And that's what we will be encouraging when we bring it to the river towns. You can see there, you can bring your own food, although the food that they provide is usually pretty good, so people will want to be trying that out. There, we are still working out the details of our agreement with them. The way we'll work this out logistically is that we are the entity that'll be working with the townships to make the arrangements, get the permits, and they are going to be, they are our vendor. They have the liquor license, they have the health permit. And we will work with staff of each of the townships to get any local permits that we need in addition to that. As it says there, the restrooms, the toilets, the air conditioning for the restrooms, that's all provided by them. They bring a generator, so you don't, they don't need to have electricity, it's a low-noise generator. See what else. This is just a slide, a little bit about how this all got started. There's actually a very longstanding history of beer gardens in Philadelphia. So this started four or five years ago. They did a program with Penn Horticulture, and it started, played off of this history of the beer gardens, and it became so popular that they went to the city of Philadelphia and partnered with the park system to make it bigger, and now they're expanding up the river. These are just some pictures of the Philadelphia experience that they've had. You can keep going, Lysanta. To the next. And you can see, some of them, they set up a little bit more elaborately. It depends on the location of each one, how they set it up. But there's seating, there's some shade, lighting. It's pretty simple. But again, as I said, very, very well received by the communities, and with some advantage to us and to the towns that are hosting us, they're very, very well marketed. So it's, it's an organization that brings a lot of people out to come and discover these towns that we'll be hosting this in. And the Valley Forge Convention Center, Tourism Convention, whatever it's called, are really thrilled about this, and they want to make this a feature of their marketing this spring and summer as well. So we wanted to introduce this concept to you today. We still have some details to work out, and as soon as we are finished with our vendor agreement with them, we will share it with you, so you can see all the, you know, parameters and the brass tacks about how this will be run. And we will work with staff to work out any permits that we need locally from the township. But we, of course, will need some approval from this board to have alcohol in the park. So we wanted to come right up, as soon as we got this together, we wanted to come in front of you and put the idea forward, and forewarn you that we will be asking for permission and ask for permission to do this for next weekend in June. So if you have any questions or want to know anything more about the project?
So, just to clarify the request, your plan is to come back to us with more information? Or are you asking us to grant permission for the alcohol in the park?
We'd like that permission as soon as you're willing to give it. We don't have the vendor agreements finalized yet, so I can't give you that tonight. I didn't include it in the packet. But we will share that with you so that you know, you know, the hours and whatnot.
But we could potentially approve that subject to receiving a satisfactory vendor agreement. That one's pretty straightforward. The one, the one that's a little more intricate, this is, I mean, the mural project's a great project, and I love the idea of the tessellation. It's quite tessellating. Is that a word? And the way that you're involving the community, you're certainly going about it in the right way, you're doing all the right things. There's just one little hoop that we have to jump through with a little zoning requirement that kind of gets in the way of murals, which actually, in this case, it's not technically classified as a mural, it's classified as a sign. So council can waive those sign requirements as they relate to your, to your project. However, usually, we would want to see the final iteration of the mural before we would, we would approve it. So the timing of it is a little complicated. So I guess, you know, we could, I think we could go two ways with this. We could potentially approve the mural subject to staff reviewing and approving the final mural design. Or you could come back with the the final mural design to get council's final approval on that.
I think our timing's going to be pretty tight, so I think we would prefer to have approval subject to final, you know, veto power over the design from staff.
Staff?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Can we do that tonight, or do you?
We could potentially do that for Monday if council was so inclined, yeah.
Great, do you need us to make a formal request, written request for that, or?
I think this is your request.
Okay, perfect, I like that, let's work. Great, so on, and on the Parks on Tap issue with the alcohol authorization, can we ask that formally request that that be on the Monday agenda as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you for clarifying that.
So, will us both for Monday evening?
Great, thank you.
I have a question.
Sure.
So, after all the dust settled and everybody goes home, who cleans up the trash?
They clean up every night, that's in the contract.
That's in the contract, so you have somewhere?
They take out their own trash, their own waste water, everything.
Okay.
On the mural, what's the plan for the maintenance after it's put in place?
Well, it, they actually, the one that's in North Carolina has stayed bright and clean for two, I think it's been two and a half years now, so, you know, it's no different than cleaning or keeping the regular trail.
It's not just, it's a highway thing.
So, it gets, it will get an anti-skid protect, protection on it, and then there's another clear coating that goes on it, so it's, it's there, I mean, it should be pretty prominent.
But, you know, the same way that the trail is kept maintained and cleaned now, it'll be the same thing.
So, who's the entity that will be responsible for maintaining the mural?
That part, I believe, is the, well, the trail itself is maintained by the borough there.
Correct, but who is, who would be responsible for maintaining the mural, I think, is the question.
You mean, like, keeping it freshly painted?
Yes.
Well, that would be us, I would imagine, yeah.
I mean, there's things that can happen, graffiti, you know, stuff like that, that just unforeseen things that we're not thinking of, that we want to make sure we account for at this stage in the process, so that's all.
You have one in, you said in North Carolina, this is the one that's going to be similar to?
Yes, I mean, we don't know what the design will look like because we're counting on the community to design it, but that is the inspiration for this, and it can't be too complicated because the community is also painting it.
And there are, will this be the first one in this area?
Yes.
Okay, and the only thing that she had said, they said about maintaining it, now our seasons are a lot different than North Carolina's, it's a little warmer than we are, it don't get as much snow and stuff, so that'll be a bit of a maybe challenge.
Yes, and this is a pilot project for us, you know, we haven't done this before, and if it goes well, and we feel, and this is, you know, we'd love to bring this to other parts of the trail as well, so we're really learning and figuring out how to do this right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Very good, thank you.
I'm going to go ahead and share some flyers with you, and I hope you all come out and paint with us.
Okay, Greater Pottstown Tennis and Learning.
Hello. Okay, good evening, I'll keep this quick because I know we're a little, but just here to update you on some things at Maple Street Park with respect to the tennis courts there, and talk about some of the next steps. So, to refresh you, Greater Pottstown Tennis Learning currently has a lease in place for use of the tennis courts at Maple Street Park in exchange for renovations there, they're in the process of installing the third court and resurfacing the two existing courts. They've had some success towards getting funding towards the second phase, which was contemplated at the beginning of this, this was a enclosure of those courts, so there could be year-round operation for both their programming and the public hours that are provided through the user agreement. The current user agreement in place contemplates the addition of that, that second phase, but does not spell out any of the ways in which it would be used, in other words, it was considered there would need to be additional work for an additional user agreement. At this time, there's no plans in place to begin construction, they're not seeking approval to construct things, but they are seeking approval to work on that user agreement so that there is some kind of approval of the enclosure in concept, this allows Greater Pottstown Tennis Learning to seek funding. In other words, they're not going to get grant money for something that council does not have an approval of in concept. The big change and the reason we're discussing it now is that at the time, it was discussed at the beginning of things, they were talking about an air support enclosure, which was a somewhat complicated plan, they've moved towards a clear span structure is what they're planning on now, that's what they're pitching, and that's what they're gathering funds for. So, wanted to put those plans in front of council so they're aware of what the changes are. Parks and Rec Department considers this to be a lot cleaner of a solution than the air support structure, the big difference is that the air support structure requires air-handling equipment, it's got a different profile in terms of the, if you want to call it the skyline, so an air support structure, a little more intrusive, has more energy use, a bigger equipment. Clear span structure just uses struts, and then there's a fabric that covers over the top of it, utilizes natural light for lighting, for heating and cooling generally relies on portable units, this is all done at the cost of Greater Pottstown Tennis Learning in operating there. The second change in this is that they eliminated the request or the need for a modular unit to serve as restrooms for that location, they have an agreement for indoor space with 1,400 Maple Street, that's the adjacent business, so they are leasing a large portion of the indoor for their programming there, they're getting restrooms there, on the whole, what we're looking at for this plan is a lot better for the site, and because of that, you know, the department's pretty comfortable with this plan and would be willing to move forward with council's approval to work out the details of that next phase of things. In anticipation of this and your consideration, a meeting was held on January 24th here, there were about sixty, sixty-five letters mailed out to adjacent properties in the neighborhood notifying them of this meeting to get the public's opinion on these potential developments, so that was held on the 24th. We only had three property owners present, but they were the immediately adjacent property owners, and we did discuss some of the concerns and the realities of that development there, you should have gotten an email with a reiteration of the Q and A associated with that. There were no major objections from the public present, you'll see their concerns are noted in that, I'll reiterate them here, the first being traffic in that quarter, because if you are, again, running classes out of that location, you're pulling in more cars, the estimation is that for group, group use at that building, it's about thirty additional cars, the majority of those are dropping off, so conservative, we're talking about an additional fifteen cars parked, which is not terribly a high volume. It does get more difficult when you talk about little league usage, but the reality is it's already some congestion in there associated with the park use, there is no good line for increasing parking associated with that park, so that is the, you know, the big point there. The other one, of course, is the view from the adjacent properties, you know, we're talking about putting this, this large structure here, I did include an email in your packets from somebody who was in attendance, 196 St. Clair, his request was that anything to do with this phase of work would include extensive greening on the frontage on the street in his property. Greater Pottstown Tennis Learning is in agreement with doing that at their cause. So, those, again, those are the two major concerns relative to that, the rest of it is spelled out in the Q and A notes that I gave you there. Just wanted to see if you had any questions relative to this that we can answer, or Greater Pottstown Tennis can answer at this time, and look for approval to continue on that plan. Again, this is not any request for an approval of plans that will be implemented in the very near future, if that makes sense.
So, just to clarify, the request is for approval to have the solicitor revise our existing lease agreement with Greater Pottstown Tennis and Learning to reflect the addition of this structure?
That is correct, and again, that would be something that's not going to be put into place until such a structure is built, but the drafting of the document gives some commitment that allows funds to be sawed.
Um, this building, is this similar to the one on Downhill Ridge Pike that they just put in, like, maybe less than two years ago? It has like a brick, it's not a brick, it's not a brick, but it has like a stone-type structure, and then it has the white over the top, and I don't, it has no air handling.
I'm not familiar with that location, I'm pulling up an image here that might give a better insight as to what it looks like, this is, you can see steel, steel structure, these are anchored into the ground, the thing that we liked about this design is it fits within the existing footprint of what's already there, doesn't expand upon that, so it doesn't affect parking, it doesn't affect the adjacent playground.
But the entire thing is then the white structure?
The...
To the, to the ground?
Correct, to, all the way down to the ground is that fabric enclosure, it's like a heavy-duty, I don't know, polyvinyl's the right word. Okay?
Good.
Any more questions, thank you very much?
Thank you. Okay, thirteen is a bid award for Pottstown Memorial Park Phase III Development.
So, bids were received on this last week, we still have some questions for the, for the bidders and hope to have a recommendation for you on Monday.
Very good. Fourteen, Manatoni Green Mini Golf Proposal.
So, if you recall at our last meeting, we discussed a proposal for the Carousel to lease the mini golf operations and run those, we got some feedback from, from some of the counselors regarding the, regarding the lease payment, and we did take this back to the Carousel for their, their consideration. If you recall, we estimate our costs to run the course to be at about $6,000 per year, while the lease payment would only cover about $3,000 per year. You know, after discussions with the Carousel, at this point, they're not willing to increase the lease payment, but they did counter offer with an offer to monetize future capital improvements that they would put into the course over the next three years. So, they are offering to supply capital improvements consisting of course obstacles and follies with a value of at least $3,000 per year. You know, the staff, I think, were mostly in agreement that these types of enhancements are needed to the course, because they're going to add a lot of interest and attractiveness to the course right now. You know, we've gotten some comments that the course is kind of sterile, as it is right now, needs to be kind of spiced up a little bit. And, you know, any capital improvements also would have to be approved by the Borough staff prior to their installation, and I think when factoring in the value of annual capital improvements into the agreement, we feel it brings us closer to a fair arrangement for this agreement. And in addition to that, we did build into the lease a 3% per year escalator to account for rising costs in the futures, all other elements presented to council at the last meeting essentially remain the same at this point.
Justin, do you mind if we just go through for council's review or recollection, what those main points are?
Yeah.
The Carousel, obviously, if they're going to do this, and if council wants this to happen this year, and that's solely up to council, we're in a timeframe, I think, that needs to get something moving sooner rather than later, given the season's approaching. So, as Justin said, basically what the draft document that we prepared based upon the input from last month is that you'd be leasing the miniature golf course, the storage shed, the area around the golf course to the Carousel for the term of this lease. That term would be initially for a three-year period of time, the lease has renewal options for five additional one-year terms, so presuming everything is working out from both sides, it could be as long as eight years, but it could be as short as three years. As Justin said, the rental payment would be $3,500 in year one, that would escalate 4% in year two, and another 4% in year three. The cost of utilities and the maintenance will be similar to what was provided to Borough Council last month on the outline. The Carousel would be solely responsible for staffing and operating both the miniature golf course and the concession stand, there would be minimum hours of operation, there would be minimum days that would have to be open, of course, weather permitting. The Borough would reserve the right to hold certain events at the golf course during the term, and that would be spelled out in the lease. If the Carousel wished to make any structural alterations to any of the improvements, the Borough would have to consent first, they're not required to do that, but they could do that. The point that Justin mentioned was the required capital improvements, that basically the Carousel would agree over the first three years to either install capital improvements or enhancements to the course valuing at least $12,000. So, it wouldn't be direct rental payment, but it would be an increase to the value of the property, and any of those improvements, of course, would become the Borough's when the lease terminated. The lease would have all of the other normal things a lease would have with respect to landlord-tenant obligations, the Carousel would have insurance, the Borough would have a right to inspect the property, the Carousel would not be permitted to assign or sublease the operation to anyone else, it would define events of default if the Carousel didn't provide or didn't come up or comply with the terms of the lease. I think, Michael, those are pretty much the basis of the lease, I don't want to misstate or overstate anything.
We think this is a good arrangement and a responsible arrangement because the Borough will retain some of the responsibilities for exterior work, such as mowing, weed whacking, and pesticide application, because we're the ones who have the equipment and know how for that, having done so, but then the actual operations that happen day-to-day, such as maintaining the water features, policing the course, and then actually vending the games, that falls to the Carousel, and we feel that that's something that they can do effectively, combining their existing operations to the benefit of all parties and also to the benefit of the citizens of the Borough, keeping in mind those minimum requirements for public hours of operation. With the addition of that commitment to 12,000 in improvements by year three, as well as the rent payment, we think that this is a good deal for all parties and that we can see some growth, again, at mini golf.
I should point out, the council, I think you've all received a letter from me today, again, I apologize, it was kind of a eleventh-hour issue based upon the timing of all this, I believe there will be people, representatives from the Carousel here Monday to make a presentation, not necessarily about this lease, but if you recall, Carousel had approached council, I guess, last fall about enhancements to the property, outdoor dining, a kitchen, different things, to make the Carousel building more attractive, so I think you're going to see a more detailed presentation on that aspect of the Carousel come Monday night. But as far as the lease agreement, this is where we stand, and I'm happy to answer any questions, if council has any other issues or concerns, we can certainly, you know, address those in the lease, or at least try to work through those. From a timings perspective, frankly, probably the latest this lease should be in place is next month, but if you guys are comfortable, it could happen sooner, but again, that's going to be your call, so.
Based on past history, do we have any numbers as to what their projected earnings would be, or profit per year? Is there any numbers out there?
Yeah, a loss of $30,000.
I'm talking, their, their profits? There's no, there's no numbers?
That's what we, you know...
I thought I saw a twenty-something thousand before, and the...
Revenue, you're talking revenue?
Okay.
Yeah, what, Michael, what were the revenue figures for Manatoni Green last year?
So, some anticipation on that, this question, I put together some numbers on the last three years' operation, so in 2016, we saw 25% growth in sales, but that was still
So in 2016, we saw 25% growth in sales, but that was still a $35,000 loss. Now, that does include some major work that was done to the course. That's not all relative to regular operation. Some of that has to do with continued infrastructure of the course that wasn't installed at the time of its initial opening, such as the things for the water features and the HVAC that wasn't initially suited to the load that was put on that building. So again, 2016, we had 25% growth, but we still were down 35,000. 2017, we saw an additional 37% growth in sales. 2017, we were in the red, 16,000. And then we come to 2018, we were down 50% in sales and we were 25,000, is what we estimated our loss. So our gross income for Manatoni Green this past year, 2018, was $29,3,078.12. And keep in mind, this was a fairly terrible year for weather for an outdoor operation business.
Okay, so that was with the Borough managing it, correct?
That is correct.
Managing it and staffing it through a third-party staffing agency.
Right, which was pretty expensive. Is there any numbers as to the profit that they're predicting that they're going to have next year?
We don't have any figures from them, what they anticipate their operations would look like.
Okay. Okay. And how many years is this agreement going to be for?
Three years.
The first term is for three years, Joe. And based upon, I guess, comments you had made last month, we were kicking around some type of revenue share, but I'm not sure we're really capable of putting any numbers to that since we're in the infancy. So I don't want to speak for Michael, but I think we were talking potentially about a revenue share after the first three years, so we all had a baseline to figure out what would be fair, presuming somebody was making money.
Right.
That's correct. Anticipation would be at the renewal, we would talk about renegotiating that arrangement, and that we would be looking to add language that says after a certain percentage of profit is realized, percentage would be due back to the Borough. This is, of course, all something that we're looking at, you know, three years down the line, based on how things go during this initial term.
Right. And the only reason why I bring this up, because if you remember last month, I talked about the fact that, you know, if there was a situation where they were making a really good profit from this clear, you know, I didn't see why the Borough should take any expense, you know, especially if they're clearing profit. You know, so that's the reason why I wanted to bring that up.
I think that's a great point, and, you know, certainly we want to make sure that we're getting the bang for our bucks, so to speak, in that regard. But, you know, just based on the numbers that we have, we just didn't see a huge profit margin, even with them running it, based on the losses that we had encountered there. But I think...
We'll see. We'll see in the next three years.
Yeah, I think we'll keep an eye on it, next three years, and, you know, let's talk about it then.
Okay.
And I think ultimately the thing to remember is that this is a partnership and remains as such, because this is Borough property, it's part of your park system, and in no way is Manatoni Green just being handed to the Carousel. It's intended to be a partnership whereby we ensure that the facility and what it represents to the community, both as a destination for locals and as also an anchor for rec tourism in the Trec district and the gateway there, remains in place. So we would be working with the organization continually.
Yep. As far as other details, we were going to reserve certain dates throughout the year for the use.
Yes, the lease specifically provides for the Borough reserving the right to use it for a number of events, and I don't know if that's a half a dozen events or whatever, but that's going to be the details, Michael.
It was anticipated at last stretch at about six, you know, in discussions with the Carousel, I mentioned our summer camp program, which visits two to three times during the course of the season. The Leadership Academy, which visits one time during the course of the season. Generally, I try to do something with the Tri-County Chamber of Commerce in conjunction with their leadership program at least once during the year. And then we would like to see two tournaments that we would work with them on. That could be Borough tournaments or collaborative tournaments, one youth and one adult. These are things that were discussed in concept, agreed within concept. They're built loosely into this agreement at this time, and that's the number anticipated.
So I'm not asking you to put a number on this, but those tournaments that we would be privy to, they would be a revenue generator for the Borough to some extent?
Well, most of them, no. Depends on how you look at it. The component with the summer camp, you know, there's no additional charge for that, but it is, you know, something that we use for a program which is profitable. The summer camp program does turn a profit, and that's a portion of it. If you're looking at the tournaments, in the past, they have been run more as something to run at breakeven because they were put together primarily for youth as a program outlet. I think working with the Carousel and a partnership on those, they could certainly be geared more towards a profit on that end. But again, when we tend to run the annual tournament, we run it under the idea that this is the one for the kids, so we try to keep the cost for participation low for that reason.
So will we have specific dates in the lease?
We'll have specific events in the lease, whatever Michael says.
Correct. We do not have specific dates in the lease, specific events. One of the pieces is that those events would be run by the Borough with Borough staffing, which is generally myself and Andy Graham, so it's, you know, we don't need to pull in multiple persons. It's a low expense for us to run those programs. We're not asking the Carousel to staff that program for us as part of the agreement.
All right. Any other questions? Very good.
Thank you very much.
Zoning request for Superior Credit Union, 930 North Charlotte Street.
Yeah, this is on your agenda, just for your review. As any other zoning application, you get a chance to look at it, to see if you want to make any comment or not. In this case, I guess it's the Superior Credit Union at 930 Charlotte Street. They're asking for permission to put an electronic sign at their bank facility. Dimensions of the sign would be 28 inches by 75 inches, and it'll be on a freestanding pole sign. I believe there is already a sign there now, but they want to put an electronic sign that requires a relief from the zoning hearing board. And council's options are simply allow the zoning hearing board to make a decision, support the application, or oppose the application. So it was just put on your agenda, so you were aware of it.
Okay. And it being my ward, I would ask that Monday night, we offer a letter of support. Seventeen, Land Bank Intergovernmental Cooperation Agreement. No, Land Bank Policies and Procedures.
So these are the policies and procedures, I think I mentioned in a previous Borough manager's report. These have been reviewed in detail by the Land Bank Board. They have been posted publicly and for public comment. We did have a dialogue at our last meeting with some of the members that were in attendance at that meeting as well, on the policies and procedures. And the Land Bank Board is recommending that council adopt Land Bank Policies and Procedures as they are. You know, essentially, the full information is in your packet, but these pertain to policies governing the acquisition of properties, title insurance, environmental concerns, as well as disposition priorities, which include owner-occupied. Market rate housing is the first disposition priority listed in that list. The following in that list are retail, commercial, or industrial, housing options for every income level. Vacant residential parcels conveyed to the neighboring property owner for side or rear yards. These are usually properties that are so small they're of no value but to the neighbor. Urban agriculture or community open space. And lastly, public purpose, those would be the disposition priorities in that order. And then transferring those properties to organizations or individuals. The Pottstown Land Bank would have to ensure that these projects would meet any local neighborhood revitalization plans, put the property back into productive, tax-paying status, or could be land assemblage for economic development, or long-term banking for future That essentially is kind of the meat of the policies and procedures. So again, this was reviewed in detail by all of the Land Bank members and members of the public, so seeking council approval of that on Monday night.
Okay, we'll list that.
I just wanted to just express for the record just my ongoing issue with the fact that there's a person on the Land Bank Board who is also on the Hobart Run Board, when both entities deal with property, and the person is making policies and procedures on both boards. I just have an issue with that. There could be some conflict there. So I just want to say that for the record.
Okay. Any other comments? So we'll list that.
Be supporting it. So that's...
You won't support the Land Bank or the policies?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, we're at seventeen, Land Bank Intergovernmental Cooperation Agreement.
So this is the agreement that essentially would bind the school district and the Borough together to be able to forgive any tax liens that are associated with the property that a Land Bank would acquire. The school district has already executed this agreement, so it is now ready for council's signature, if they're also in agreement. Once that's done, we would then forward it to the Land Bank for their signature. They've already approved this document before it was sent to the school district for their There's just one provision in this, is that it does allow either party to back out of the agreement with 30 days' written notice.
Okay. So we'll do that Monday. Eighteen, Master Traffic Ordinance Amendment.
So in preparation for the spring rollout of the Park Mobile Parking Payment Services and implementation of paid parking on Borough streets, the following ordinance changes are necessary. Establishment of three-hour paid parking with the first hour free on both sides of High Street between Manatoni and Madison, and on both sides of King Street between Manatoni and Franklin. Establishment of mobile payments as an alternative payment method in three-hour parking zones and along High Street and King Street, as well as Borough lots. Note existing, please note that existing kiosks will still be an option in Borough lots where these are presently located. Establishment of paid parking zone for approximately 20 spaces of Buddings Smith Family Plaza. This paid parking zone would start from 6:00 PM Friday and end at 2:00 AM on Monday. And then revised hours in Borough lots and street parking from 6:00 AM to 2:00 AM, seven days a week. So those are the main bullets of that ordinance change.
Okay. Any questions? Discussion? All right, we'll list this for action Monday evening. Nineteen, Kime Street Overlay Project Task Force.
So as we mentioned, we've received a grant, a TCDI grant, to work on a overlay district for the Kime Street corridor in preparation for the Kime Street Bridge, going under construction there in 2020. Basically, to look at how we could get better utilization out of the parcels of land that abut Kime Street in that area, you know, whether there can be higher and better uses that are compatible with the existing industrial uses that are still necessary in that area. So we've put together a task force for this project that would help advise us on the types of changes that would help them as property owners or help them as businesses to be, to put land into more productive use. And, you know, we have virtually all the, many of the property owners that abut Kime Street and Industrial Highway in that area. We have Steve Abrams from Mayor Pollock, Greg Rosenberg from Contrast Metals, Jay Bound from Pottstown Industrial Complex, Peggy Lee Clark, as well as Winter Stokes, Keith Place, Courtney Hi, Rita Paez, whose ward it is located in. Chuck Garner would be there to assist on any ordinance language or legal matters. Dan Wean, Mike Paulus, who is a resident in that area, Keith Edlin, also a resident, and Robert Greps, also a resident in that area. So I think we've selected a very diverse group that'll help us form the new vision for that corridor in town.
Okay. There's no action.
Well, we would look, council actually needs to appoint that task force Monday night.
Oh, okay. All right, then we'll do that Monday. That's Kime Street. Planning Commission, Brian Hyder has requested to be reappointed. If there's no problem, we'll list that for Monday. Hill School would like to close the street on May 25th for their commencement. This has been done in the past, so we'll list that for Monday. Twenty-two, the Halloween Parade asking for a street closure on October 22nd, 2019. We'll list that for Monday.
And just to clarify, that is a park and recreation-sponsored event, so they're requesting that the $100 parade permit fee be waived, since it's essentially a check that would have to be cut from one department to the next, which would probably cost us more money just to go through that process.
Right. Okay. No problem there. Okay, councilor's general discussion. Councilor Prostle, anything? Vice President?
Nothing.
Counselor Levinson?
Nothing.
Counselor Lindsey?
I usually say something, but I'm so tired. My stomach is in my back, so I'm not going to say anything.
Sometimes this happens. Counselor Paez? Anything? Counselor Kirk?
Just wanted to remind everybody of Black History Month. Just want to have a quick profile here, just want to read a little bit. It'll be quick. This is Norma Merrick Salaric. She's an architect, Norma Merrick Salaric, born April 15, 1926, in Harlem, New York. Worked behind the scenes on some of the largest architectural projects in America, notable in architecture history as the first African-American woman registered architect in New York and California. Salaric was also the first black woman to be elected to the prestigious Fellow of the American Institute of Architects. In addition to being the production architect for many high-profile Geren and Associates projects, Salaric became a role model to many young women entering the male-dominated architectural profession. Salaric's legacy as a mentor is profound. Because of disparities she faced in her life and career, Norma Salaric could be sympathetic to the struggles of others. She led with her charm, grace, wisdom, and hard work. She never excused racism and sexism, but gave others the strength to deal with adversities. Architect Roberta Washington has called Salaric "the reigning mother hen to us all." Norma Merrick was born in West Indies, parents who had moved to Harlem, New York. Her father, a doctor, encouraged her to excel in school and to seek a career in a field that normally was not open to females or African-Americans. She attended Hunter High School... She attended Hunter, Hunter High School, an all-girls magnet school, and Bernard College, a women's college associated with Columbia University, which did not accept women students. In 1950, she earned a Bachelor's of Architecture degree. After receiving her degree, Norma Merrick was unable to find work in an architectural firm. So she took a job, just lost my thing. So she took a job in the New York Public of Department Works, Public Works. While working there, she gained a lot of experience, and she was able to get a job of Owings and Mitchell, where her career just took off from there, so. Just wanted to give you that profile. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. I have nothing at this time, and number twenty-four is comments from Citizens President. Is there anyone here who would like to speak who has not? And have you signed in?
I have.
Okay, great.
Thank you, Council, I know it's late, I'll try to keep it to three minutes. I'd like to ask you all to join Councilman Kirkland in not approving the proposed policies and procedures of the Land Bank on Monday night. I support the Land Bank in favor of the Land Bank. I think it's going to be a vital too, tool to the revitalization of this community. But I'm against it for one reason, and that's simple, it provides the Board with nearly unchecked discretion in determining who is an eligible buyer of property that's owned by the Land Bank, and how accountable those buyers must be to the Land Bank's mission. This is a handbook on land banks in Pennsylvania. It's written by David Feldman, a real estate professional who was involved in drafting of Pennsylvania Land Banks Act. In his handbook, he writes that "A common challenge that land banks face during the disposition process is the appearance of transparency and a lack of favoritism. As a public authority, gaining public trust will require consistent application of rules to build a reputation of impartiality. Creating a set of evaluation measurements will be necessary for determining how developers are qualified to purchase property or to prevent the Land Bank from being used for political reasons. Council, these policies and procedures as written have no clear evaluation measurements to speak of for determining qualified purchasers. Section 4.4 addresses qualified transferees of property. It states, quote, "All applicants seeking to enter into acquisition and disposition agreements with the Land Bank will be required to provide as part of the application such information as may be requested by the Land Bank." As may be requested by the Land Bank. Council, this language allows the Land Bank to determine on a case-by-case basis what information, if any, is required from the applicant. I appreciate the need for flexibility for the Land Bank for making these decisions, but this is far too much. In 4.5, it lists a number of reasons that the Board may, if they want to, disqualify a potential buyer. Again, it sets no minimum standards and allows the Board complete discretion to move the goalposts on any potential buyer for any reason they want, for any applicant they want, as far as they want. Finally, I also have here Pennsylvania Land Bank Resource Guide. This was written by Winnie Branton, who's been consulting with our Land Bank throughout the process of getting it off the ground. In it, she advocates that prior to adopting an acquisition and disposition policy like we have here, the Board should draft a strategic plan to guide Land Bank activities. This has not been done by our Land Bank at this point.
You have 30 seconds.
At next week's meeting, I'd like Borough Council to reject the proposed policies and direct the Land Bank to adopt actual uniform minimum standards, as well as a strategic plan to guide their operations. Thank you for your time. We hope you all get back to something.
Thank you all. We will be going into executive session for personnel reasons. There will be no decision, we're not coming back.